Of the school committee in order, this meeting is being recorded. And so school rules shall apply here. And the first order of business will be the pledge allegiance to the flag and as soon as that comes out, you'll join me, please. The flag comes up. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is to ratify the agenda of July 22nd, 2020. If there's no objection to the agenda, I'll take a motion to so ratify.
George, this Nicole, do we have to amend anything that's not being voted on?
Well. I can bring this up right now, we're not going to be voting on the school calendar. You've got the emails related to that that have changed since I sent out this email. We will not be voting on anything to do with a plan as far as the school draft is concerned. And I believe the school handbooks are also.
School handbooks are going to be.
I'm sorry, the feedback there.
The school handbooks are going to be put on the August 9th. Meeting so that we can add anything else that we need to related to next school year related to.
Okay, so we.
Patty, could you please mute everyone? We're getting a lot of.
Lot of feedback here.
Thank you. So should we amend the agenda then to remove those votes?
I would amend the agenda to remove the votes for the three items that are just mentioned, the school handbook, Mashpee Public Schools Draft Learning Plan. And the school committee meeting. Excuse me. School calendar.
Okay, I don't see anything on the school calendar on the agenda.
No, the revised agenda, George, we took the calendar off because the.
Thank you, that's right, we did take the calendar off. To keep up with this. So we're moving a vote on the school handbook and the draft learning plans for 21. There's feedback there somewhere and I know.
Thank you, Patty. Now you have to unmute, George.
I just kept pressing unmute, but it wouldn't do anything, there it goes. Unmute. Any other changes to the. Excuse me, agenda for this evening? So may I have a motion to ratify the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Can we please spell out the motion so I know exactly what we're removing from the agenda?
All right, from the agenda, we will be removing from the printed agenda. The six o'clock, the school handbooks will be removed from a vote. And the 6:15, the Mashpee Public Schools Draft Learning Plan will be removed from a vote.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, call for a vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
On a, Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes, five, five zero on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 8th meeting. Those are in your package. Chair will accept a motion to approve.
Hey, Mr. Chair, are we not doing public comment?
Thank you. That did remain on the agenda, thank you, miss, thank you, Jeff. I do not, is there any member of the public here who would like to comment? If there is a member of the public would like to comment, you can go down on the bottom where it says chat and just put in share or something and I can call on you, I'll give you another 30 seconds to do that. Okay, hearing none, I will declare the public comments section closed. And move on to the approval of the minutes for July 8th, which are in your package. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Nicole, is there a second on the motion?
This is Jeff Gorman, second.
Jeff, a second by Jeff, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes, unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is a vote for on the negotiations, vote on the unit A contract for fiscal year 2123. Chair will accept a motion to vote on, to approve. The unit A contract for fiscal year 2123.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we ratify our vote on the approval of the unit A contract for FY 21 through 23.
A motion has been made to ratify approval, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Thank you, motion made by Dawn, seconded by Nicole, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff, you abstained. Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes, ratified four zero with one abstention. The next item that's printed on the agenda is the school handbooks, that has been taken off. And next item is the Mashpee Public Schools Draft Learning Plan.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
That's not how I understood the motion, I thought we were just removing the vote on the school handbooks, if we want to remove that from the agenda, isn't it best to table it?
Yes, I thought, yes, you are correct, we'll accept a motion to table the school handbooks. And move that to the meeting of August 19th, I believe.
19th, yes.
This is Jeff, I moved to postpone the. School handbook discussion until the meeting of. Say that date again, I apologize. August 19th?
Motion has been made, is there a second to the motion?
This is Kathy, I second that.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Kathy, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George. Motion passes by the vote of five to zero in the affirmative. Okay, Mashpee Public Schools Draft Learning Plan. I will turn this over to Patty, the district has gone into tremendous amount of work developing a opening plan for the coming year. It's been designated by D E S C I as to basically how this plan should be developed. And this is just basically an information session of what is concerned in the plan and to answer any questions that the members of the school committee might have. And we are not, we've got direction from D E S C I that I just got, that we're not supposed to vote on this, this evening, but rather postpone that vote until early August, which is the meeting we're tentatively scheduling. For the 10th of August, but this is an opportunity for the committee and the public to at least learn what is currently in process. And with that, I'll give Patty five minutes.
George? Can you please explain? The rationale for the delay by D E S C I?
Rationale for the delay on the opening of schools?
No, on the vote.
The only thing I have here is I found on the D E S C I website. While you continue working to flesh out these models, I'm requesting you hold off on announcing any final decisions. About what reopening will look like for the fall in your district until early August. While preparations for the fall must move forward, we are still waiting for key information that will directly impact the best fit reopening model for each community. This includes more information about financial resources that may be available, including the possibility of a second federal stimulus package. And any changes in local COVID-19 transmission and rates. I understand that local communities are eager for districts to finalize their reopening plans as soon as possible, at the same time, I am confident that our families and students. Will be better served by a thoughtful planning process that works first to explore options and takes in critical information before local plans are finalized.
So just to add to that today, with a meeting with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. He basically said that your school committees should understand the direction that your leadership team has gone, is going. It's not necessarily that you have to vote, but you have to be, have that understanding, I have to file something on Friday, so. Anyway, that's where we're at with, with that piece. And like George said, by August 10th is when the final. Plan is due to the Department of Education, and so there will need to be a meeting on that date and then hopefully we would submit after the meeting. So this, I chose to do this as a slide presentation, it will be something that will, is available to all of our families as well. It's easy to update as we move along. And so I think most here with us tonight understand that we have been instructed to develop a plan that has three models for school year 2021, a 100% in-person, a hybrid model and 100% remote. And part of this process, which has. Not been that long, but it seems to be very long. Has involved looking at scheduling, safety operations, instructional responsibilities. And then also most important, or somewhat importantly, is the pressure test of your facilities to determine if you're able to create the safe learning environment that the medical professionals are recommending. That we have. Let's see, how do I advance this, let's see. Oh, there we go. So just for some dates by the 31st, which is Friday, the preliminary reopening summary is due to D E S C I, that is an online form that. You fill out sort of in a template and then by August 10th, the comprehensive plan is due, they did say today that. That we should expect feedback on our plans by August 7th, so it's about a week turnaround there for the Department of Education. And just to emphasize that the goals of our plan are the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff, equity and access for all students and learning and teaching. And D E S C I's guidance for all districts is to strive for a 100% in-person learning for all students, so that's sort of the. The gold medal that you would strive for. Just a quick recap of, these are different guiding documents that are easily accessible, this is a link at the bottom, if you want to. Read any of those, but those are the pieces of information that we continue to pull from as we develop our plan and you can see sort of a timeline of how. Infrequent or frequent they are coming to us with the last one being just a few days ago. This is just sort of a quick recap too of all of the things that we have done up to this point in terms of trying to prepare the best learning environment and working environment as we enter next year. This is sort of like a flow chart. You know, the goal was teaching and learning student and staff safety, so you can flow through it, so the first question we have to ask is, can we have all of our students in our classrooms with six foot distancing, which is what the medical professionals. Recommend, actually, D E S C I and medical professionals. Said it could be a three to six foot distance, but we are not choosing to do anything but the six foot distancing. There are some advantage, I mean, obviously, safety advantages as well as a few others to that, so you answer the question at the. High school, we cannot do that distancing and so therefore, therefore they have already landed in a hybrid model would be the plan that we developed for that group. The in-person learning, if you can distance. Which happened to be what we found ourselves in at the elementary schools, then you need to look at, can we? Can we accommodate the spacing with the staff that, or are we able to get the staff we need? If you say yes to that, you continue down and the biggest one that we've been dealing with in the last two days is the bus ridership. And those requirements and we cannot, at least at this point in time. Handle the spacing requirements at the elementary level. With an all in-person model, so we're still looking a little further and there's a few things that could impact it, but it's looking like. Based on the bus ridership and everything we've looked at, that we would probably. Go to a in-person model for our youngest learners because it is really important, that's when they're learning to read, that's the most important for me. They're all important, all the grade levels, but we really need those kids to be with their teachers. And what we would suggest is that grades four through six follow the hybrid model. That will allow the right spacing that we would need on our buses, we believe. Students are always placed in cohorts whenever they're in the, in a school building and safety practices and protocols are always in place. And if you look at the hybrid model there, which we'll go over a little later. We're, we're proposing a week on, week off, there's a Mashpee week and a Falcon week, this allows for students who are in their remote week. To basically be out of a school building for nine days, so that's a pretty good, when you count the weekends, a pretty good gap. Cohorts will be developed based on bus routes, we are going to make sure. That both cohorts, whether you're in the Mashpee week or Falcon week, are well representative of what our population would be if we were all together. The remote week. There's some information there about that in terms of it's, you follow the schedule as if you were in school. And then certain populations will be prioritized to only be in school. And then if there is a stay-at-home order issued, we would be remote learning and if, and then we can talk about that further down, anybody have any questions on the chart? Okay. Okay, so we did conduct a parent guardian survey on July 20th, this is some of the data, it's not. You know, it's not presented in a pretty way with charts, but it was a way to consolidate all three schools in one. It should be noted that the responses to certain prompts. The percentages shown in the yellow or the blue or the pink. Is based on the number who responded and if you look at the top, you'll see that the number of responses received by each school, the number of households at each school and that that's a response rate. So even if we, if. Go a little bit lower, 50% is a pretty good response rate for a survey. But it obviously, you don't know who you're missing in terms of what their voice has. So keeping that in mind, this is just some of the responses from the parents last week. If we were offering 100% in-person learning with safety measures in place, would you send your child? You can see the data there, whoops. 118 families said yes at Coombs, 145 at Quash, that was not an option offered at MMHS. 100% in-person learning where they're still undecided, 37 families and 50 families of those who responded. And then instead of 100% in-person, a family might choose 100% remote, you'll see the families there, which is 11 families and 15 respectively at Coombs and Quash. And then I plan to homeschool my children instead of 100% model and there's five families there. We have the information of who they are and so in terms of the number of children, we could also look at that. But I'll talk a little bit later about the survey that's going out this week, this was just sort of to get up, for us to get an idea of where our families were. The second question posed was the hybrid model, if in-person is not feasible at Coombs and Quashnet. Would you participate in a hybrid model, which like I said is one week on and one week off? And you see the results there, 110 families at Coombs and 144 at Quash. 191 of our MMHS families. Would participate in a hybrid. If they're still undecided, you see that data there for each school. And then instead of hybrid learning, I would choose 100% remote, you see eight families at Coombs, 14 at Quash and 25 at MMHS. And then I plan to homeschool my children instead of hybrid, there's six families at Coombs and one family at MMHS that would choose that. And then these other questions that were within the survey that I think were important is we rely on in-person learning in order to work. So that's 103 families at Coombs, 107 at Quash and 86 at MMHS. That look, you know, would make sense that the percentage goes down as the children get older, because you can leave your children at home. I plan to drive my children to and from school because I have bus concerns, you see those 57 families at Coombs, 35 at Quash and 45 at MMHS. And then I can drive my children to school, to and from school if it helps with busing. So you had 83 families at Coombs, 62 at Quash and at MMHS, it's 65 and I believe when you look at those families in terms of the actual children. Is it hope, do you remember what that number is at 154?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
What of the families that said they would drive their children to and from school, do, we were just talking about it today, what's the number of kids that's involved with that?
Sorry, I don't have that number because I actually created a spreadsheet so I wouldn't have to and I would have to add it all up together, it's not sorted that way, I'm sorry.
Just so you know that we are looking at that because that has an impact on moving forward.
Yeah, I will say, this is Hope again, sorry, when we have addressed transportation, those students, we have removed them from trying to find a bus spot for them in our. Sort of our calculations and our analysis, so, but if you need the 100% number, I could get it for you, it just won't be till tomorrow.
No, I don't, I don't think we need that right now, does anyone who's on this, in this meeting have any questions about information on this chart or would like to make a comment?
Hi Patty, this is Nicole, thanks for walking us through those, one thing that didn't occur to me until today is that. You, the, the columns aren't necessarily additive in terms of families. So if you have a kid in both Coombs and Quashnet, you answered to, you know, you answered a survey for each of them, but you're not, you know, you're counted in both columns. So these may not necessarily reflect families. Unless you're going down the columns, if you're going across.
Right, no, if you're going across, if you look at that first one in yellow, you would assume there are, there's the same, if you have kids at both schools, it's one family in each of those numbers, so yes, you have to go down in these. In order to get a feel for what a family feels who has students at Coombs versus, and a family at Quash.
Yeah, so we're not looking at the data by families, we're looking at it by school.
Yes, down the column.
This is Kathy, can you just clarify, Hope, when you said you removed. Children from the bus list, is the one, which, which line was that referring to, the one where people said they planned to drive their children or the ones that said they would be able to drive their children?
So I should clarify, sorry, this is Hope again, I should clarify, no child has been removed from any actual bus list, so this was just in our analysis, trying to figure out how many students we could serve by the bus. And both, I removed the. Children, the numbers for families who indicated that they were going to and for those who indicated that they. Would consider it to allow for more bus ridership.
So just for, just for like, to kind of get an idea, that's what you meant by that, so like.
Yes, but our next step would be the sort of. Families making an actual decision and so I think, you know, the superintendent is going to talk about anything we're proposing, there are lots of contingencies that have to be built in to all of what we're proposing. Once we receive data back from families of what they're going to choose to do, does that answer you, Kathy?
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, no problem.
Anybody else with any questions on this? We can always come back if you do.
I do, hey, it's Jeff. So two questions for me, one is, I can't find the asterisk that comments at the bottom about families of eighth graders who are attending tech.
It's in the 559 households at MMHS. Up here.
Oh, there it is, oh my goodness, if it was a snake, it would have bit me, okay, thank you. The other thing is for the busing, so when we were, when the group, the planning group was making. Decisions regarding busing, are we using this survey to inform that or are we using the number of kids that normally get bused?
We're using a combination, we're starting with, what we've done is rolled all of our students over grade-wise for next year. And they're on their buses as they would be if it was a normal year, that's sort of the starting point, then we're starting to, well, then what we did was we looked at siblings. Because according to the guidelines from the Department of Education, you can have two siblings share a seat. Everybody else is supposed to be one, one child for each seat. So then we started to look at that. We looked at choice students, so we, we really have to have half. Half ridership on our buses is what it comes down to, you could, you could eke up a little bit because of siblings, but it really is not making a big difference for us. So you're going from buses that were two to a seat down to one to a seat, so that's a major challenge.
No, fair enough, I was just curious what number you were using that we couldn't support, just something in between the survey and full ridership?
Well, the last, you know, in, in terms of what we were, we have extra buses just to put, so we generally, I'm just going to pick out elementary, we generally run 15 buses. We have the capacity to put five other buses into the mix. We also have three more coming in October, but it's, that's, the problem becomes bus drivers and also that's not. Exactly a good fit as well, if we were trying to make sure our K through six were all in person, it's still not doable. Well, not as of right now.
Yeah, may I add something, is that okay?
Please, you are.
Yeah, well, no, I've just been living in the bus world for the last two days, so we, our proposal to go. In-person K to, you know, if that's what ends up being proposed, K to three and bus hybrid four to 12. Is contingent upon adding those additional buses in. And a certain number of parents choosing to transport their child, so for Mr. Gorman's question, it was, it's. All of the previous bus ridership, the current, the kids who are going into kindergarten are on there, but then we've. Layered, unlayered the other pieces to get. To the best number we could of how many kids would be in the bus and that will take more than what we have currently, it will take additional buses that we have, but not, we don't have drivers for, so I just wanted, I hope that was helpful.
No, thanks. Another question too, I apologize, I'm sorry, Dawn, just, and I'll be quick.
No, go ahead.
Did I understand this correctly too, that we did not give the option for the parents to actually say, I would like to have a hybrid model? They were just able to choose positively if a hybrid model was available, that they would be willing to send their children, correct?
Are you talking middle high school? Middle?
No, I'm talking everybody, just in the survey, again, I didn't get a chance to see the survey, I can only go off of this chart. So the way that I read it is that when I, when I, you know, if I was given the opportunity to answer hybrid. I get to say, yes, I would send my child hybrid if in-person wasn't feasible, but I wasn't able to answer a question saying what my. Choice of A, B, or C would be as a parent.
Well, you.
Do you want me to answer it, is that helpful? Okay, I don't have to, Patty, if you want to.
No, all I was going to say is the way, and the survey was sent to all of the school committee members, so. What it was set up like is, as an elementary family, I could say, yes, I'm, I'm going to send my child in person or no, I'm not. Or then, and then you can answer the yellow section, you also got to answer the blue question, so you could have said yes to hybrid, no to in-person, you could have said yes to both of them, that you're willing to explore both of them.
But, but Mr. Gorman, there was never an option where you could say. You could pick between the three. That, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, because in parentheses, it says if in-person not feasible, so.
Right, that was never a choice. Right, that was never a choice.
I take out a 33% of the, of the options for me in that, that particular time.
Yes, because Desi, we, we are not providing three options for families. Ultimately, we'll be providing two.
Right, so once we decide on a plan, the, a family can choose the plan that we're promoting or we're proposing, or they can choose to be a remote learner. That's how that's going to land.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry? You broke up for me.
Oh, so when we're, when we're finalized and in the survey that we hope to send to families later this week, if we have, if we're recommending based on all of our study that we are going to offer, I'm just going to use the, what we think we're going to land. If, if we say K to three is an in-person model, those parents are going to be asked to say, yes, I will do the in-person, or no, I'm going to choose remote. That's the only choices they have. And then likewise, anyone from four through 12 is going to be able to say, I choose hybrid or remote. Now, in a hybrid, you, you could, if you're, if you choose totally remote, at some point you would be able to make the option. But that's, each, each family will have a choice between two options.
But the district has to be prepared to provide three. Because if we have to close, or, you know, we have to have a, a, a third option that exists. Well, I see them as like this continuum, but we, we can get to that later and see if I'm thinking.
Can I just speak to that, Nicole, is that okay? We don't have to, we don't have to be able to offer all three. And the example of that is at the high school. We cannot offer all three. So we had to plan or do a feasibility study for all three. But there are, if we are unable to meet the requirements for one of the plans, then no, we do not have to have an option for that. And like I said, the middle high school is an example of that.
Yeah, because we cannot do, it's not feasible for us to do in-person there.
So the feasibility study is what determines what we can propose for families, from which they can choose those two options. But Desi is saying that if feasibility means we could be in-person, then that's the option that we need to go with. And if we can't, then we wouldn't have an, so in other words, for grades four through six, if our feasibility study determines that we cannot get kids to school for whatever reason, then, then we will not have a full in-person option for them because it's not feasible. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Does that mean we do have a full remote plan?
We do have a full remote plan if we have to, if the governor or a particular local case shuts us down for a period of time.
I didn't see that in the slides, are we going to talk about that tonight as well?
Well, it's in the slides in the sense of the, anything that's already hybrid has the remote piece built in. And for the K through three, their remote would become tied to their teacher. And, and it would not look exactly like the spring, but it would be a continuation of what the model was that, of the in-person model. So they are prepared to continue whatever that model was in a remote setting. But the remote model is explained in this document because we have explained what a remote learner will be doing.
But I, I'm confused because I thought that we weren't doing synchronous hybrid and that there was part of the remote learning is going to be in-person learning. So I, so I.
Yeah, well, let, well, hold on. If it's not clarified as we move through, we'll make sure it is before we leave.
Yeah, fair enough. I just wanted to caveat too, that you did send the survey out and my comment was, I did not get the opportunity to review it.
Okay, thank you.
So, so this is Don, one of the presumptions is no changes in school start times, correct?
That's correct.
And was that potentially considered particularly in grades four through six?
No. We're not, we were, we would, it, it would be rather expensive to add another tier of busing. Not only in terms of the bus contract itself, but in terms of the way the day would go as well. You know, the time, the impact on the time. So.
Impact on the time.
That answered your question.
Time, time as far as for who? Not the teachers because the grades are different.
Yeah, what were you looking for when you say that? Four through six as its own route?
Versus, yes.
Yeah.
Versus being with the Casey Coombs.
We did, we're not, we weren't looking at that because you, we couldn't go any later. If you were to choose to go earlier, you still have a lot of timing in between the other two runs. It would get, I think it would be rather interruptive, disruptive for families. But no, the answer to your question is no, we are not considering three-tier busing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm sharing on a couple of the slides. We also did a staff survey last week. 194 staff members responded. I don't have everything in here of the questions that they answered, but the survey was developed collaboratively with the Mashpee Teachers Association President Mary Stickley. So we worked together on the questions. You'll see the response rate there. There's a little tidbit of information about the age ranges of our staff. And then there's some information we asked in terms of, of members of our team who have situations that might make them more vulnerable or more worried, I would say, about their health or the health of someone in their lives. So you'll see, they answered if they were over 60, if they're immunocompromised or high risk, they live with someone over 60, or live with someone with ish, with medical issues, they take care of someone over 60 or care for someone. So that's sort of, that piece of information. Oops, go ahead.
So, I don't know if this is on the subsequent slide. So what are you using that information to, what's your action item from that?
It was just for us to sort of get a feel for what's out there in our workforce.
Does that potentially mean that we would change our leave of absence policy? Or need to change our leave of absence policy?
No, every member has, you know, whatever choices they're going to make and there are protections in place for whatever might need to, to happen for a member and their family. And it's pretty much guided by, you know, nothing within Mashpee itself so much as it is with sort of the state and federal protections.
So.
Decisions will, you know, a, a, a member may have to make a decision based on falling into one of these worry areas, I guess.
When would that decision have to happen?
Uh, we are going to, as we get closer to the start, we are going to provide a date that members need to confirm that they're going to return to their position or that they plan to return. Because we have to plan. So as much information as we can, as much information as we can provide to all of our employees so that they have a better understanding of what the year would look like for them and whether that's something that they are able to do. So within, probably towards the middle of August is when we are going to ask for feedback from them on that. Okay, also collected some of the questions. Oh, I put that in there twice, I'm sorry about that. I apologize, don't look at the top chart then. All right, so the bottom left, one to five, one being the least comfortable, five being the most comfortable. And then it's asking about how comfortable are you with a hybrid model of teaching and learning? A model in which students are divided into two cohorts, alternating between an in-person learning week with safety measures in place and a remote learning week. And so you'll can see there in terms of probably if I were, oh, and by the way, that little six wasn't supposed to be there, got corrected after, so those six is really a five. But you can see there some of the information related to that model. Also at the bottom lower right, that's the same question for an in-person teaching and learning model with safety measures in place, how comfortable they are there. So whether you want to include who, the, the number three as sort of one way or the other, you'd have to do it with both ways. So if you're going to sort of tally those that are not so comfortable, you'd probably go one, two, three. And those being a little more comfortable, I'd go three, four, five. Or take three out altogether and just look at those. So however you want to interpret that information, that's there. And then the question at the top right was, given the state of COVID pandemic on Cape Cod and there was a link to the daily update, how comfortable they are, are they with the three options? So you'll see there the information that we gathered. Any questions on anything on this? Okay, so this chart is assuming 100% in-person learning. And like I said, this is sort of an ever-changing daily, daily picture. But at the Coombs School, the average homeroom will have 11 students and there's a few slightly higher numbers based on larger spaces. Safety practices and protocols are in place. Students are grouped in cohorts, six-foot distancing, frequent mask breaks. And when you take a mask break, it's not supposed to be more than, for more than 10 minutes at a time and there are, are protocols and practices for doing that. Our lunches will be eaten in the gym or the cafeteria. They're set up as individual seating spots, not tables. Specials will be provided. We are going to create some outside learning spaces so teachers can take their students outdoors for lessons. And those would be opportunities for kids to be further than six feet and not have their masks on. At the Coombs School, we will have a one-to-one technology program. There will not be any sharing of devices. The teachers are, have also started to do a pretty good job of figuring out materials that will not, so that we don't have to share materials. And then the bus transportation is one student per seat. The same is for the Quashnet School, except their homerooms do accommodate 15 students and there were a few larger spaces at 20. Now, this, in, this column is, was prior to us leaning towards hybrid for grades four through six. So we can talk about that as I move further in this presentation. Same thing, everything is the same that I just read for, in the Coombs column. And then there is no 100% in-person learning at the Mashpee Middle High School because we cannot accommodate the six-foot distancing and have all of our students there. And I do want to give a shout out to the DPW and particularly Brad, Brad Tripp and his crew because they have done a lot of work with us, not only removing a lot of excess furnishings from the rooms because there's a, in addition to spacing, the density, there just needs to be less stuff. But also helping us with the laying out of the desks and making sure they're six feet. We intend to put a marking on, on one spot so that the desk can always be lined up so that we can maintain that six-foot distancing over time. But I do, you know, give a shout out to them because there's a lot of movement of furniture and arranging. This is a Coombs School first grade classroom with 11 students. This is a couple of visions of the Quashnet rooms. Just to point out though, the, the left picture was the, is the current music room and that was one of the rooms that could accommodate more students. But with the challenge with busing and being able to have 100% of our students in the building, it's not likely that we're going to be using these larger settings. It will probably go back to being used by the music teacher. So I'll talk about what it's going to look like four through six when we get a little further. And then these are a couple of pictures from the middle high school. They've done a really good job of getting class sizes down to 17. Now, we can't fit 17 chairs in a room and be six feet apart. They can fit 10. So what's going to happen on the hybrid, in the hybrid model with one week on, one week off, is that a teacher will have eight to nine students sitting in front of them and eight to nine students at home. We will leave 10 desks in place because there may be some high-need students who based on the, their learning requirements would be participating more in the in-person model. So you have a science lab on the left and you have the history room on the right. Okay, so looking at the hybrid model, which is grade seven through 12, like I said before, you will have a Mashpee Week and a Falcon Week. And I think a shout out to Principal O'Brien came up with those names because then when we're all back together, we're the Mashpee Falcons, which is an awesome vision. So the Mashpee Week, you are in school with all the safety practices and protocols in place. And when you are in your Falcon Week, you are remote learning. You are grouped by buses, bus routes. And although that's a general statement, I want you to understand that some bus routes may have to be adjusted slightly and we're not just going to say, oh, you know, buses one through six are in this cohort. We are looking across the community and we will be choosing routes that allow us to have very balanced student cohorts between the two different weeks. The remote week, students will follow the same schedule as the in-person learning week. They will have real-time face-to-face and recorded lessons delivered by Mashpee educators. This is dramatically different from what we had for the three to, three and a half months or three months prior to at the end of last school year. The guidance from the Department of Education is that the students are expected to spend the same amount of time learning as they would in a school day, which at the middle high school is five and a half hours. It's not that we expect them to be on a computer that whole time, but the, everyone has to get their head around what at-home or what remote learning looks like. Is that type of a commitment? It's not, it's not the half-day that the commissioner put in place when we were in that emergency situation. At the high school, the, we are going to shift to a block schedule and there will be four blocks each day. And they're about 85 minutes each, they're balanced. And you would alternate between an A day and a B day. So students normally carry seven courses. So each of those courses would be taking place in a block. And you have to have balanced blocks between an A and a B day. So there's an eighth block every other day. And that will be used for providing supports, extra help, an opportunity for connections. You could call it an opportunity to work on projects or homework. It's just an extra study time and it's another 85-minute block. In the hybrid model, attendance is taken for all classes, whether you're sitting in a classroom or you are sitting at home. And grades are earned as well. Remote learning as well as in-person learning. And then like I said, certain populations of students may be participating in the in-person learning. And so, and I don't know if I talked about it in the next slide, but the remote learner is expected to join every class through Zoom, attendant, visually through Zoom. Teachers are going to want to see the kids. Attendance is taken. There could be a short, live, explicit instruction lesson provided by the teacher. It could be 10 or 15 minutes long, like it would be in a normal class. It could have been pre-recorded. What we are encouraging teachers to do is basically create a slide deck of their lessons and that they are sort of evolving into the role of facilitator. So just as you would have students working independently in the classroom, there will be time for students to work independently at home. They will be able to connect back in with their teacher as they do that work. There's also opportunities to partner the in-school student with a remote learner in terms of, in terms of any kind of partnership work. So does anybody have any questions or have a, an understanding of what a hybrid model looks like at the middle high school?
I have a question. Okay. This is Nicole. So you said it's not going to resemble the spring. I think those of us with middle and high school students, so what does that mean? Is there a different tool that you're using for the online instruction component? Or is everyone going to be using the same one?
Well, in the spring, the, many of the core content areas, we used the Edgenuity platform. So there wasn't a lot of, of interaction necessarily with a Mashpee educator. They were available, but they were not providing the instruction. They were not teaching the content or the skills. That will not be taking place in the new model. That will not be taking place uh, in the new model. The teachers are actually planning the lessons and they will be providing the um, instruction. So if it's if it's a calculus class and you're in school, you're listening to that teacher. If you are a remote learner and you're signing into that calculus class, you're going to see your teacher. And depending on how the the plan for that 85 minutes was built. You may be staying connected to that teacher for the next 15 minutes as she provides instruction. She may have pre-recorded herself and she may say to you, now I want you to go, you know, watch the video of this instructional piece. And then there'll be other activities. So it's it's not um, using that platform. And the other piece, like I said, that is different is the expectation of time spent learning in the spring. Was sign you know, significantly less by about two hours than it is going to be in the fall. That's the guidance, that's the requirement of the Department of Education.
And uh, as a follow-up, this Nicole again, so and then for parents. Who are also trying to draw a comparison from the spring in terms of how we tracked our kids' progress. How will that be different? In the.
You know, I didn't, I'm, you know, Principal Bowstrachi is on here in terms of what Edgenuity look like. Your track, you will be tracking your students' progress through Power School. No different than when if they were in school. So they will have assignments, everything is going to be graded. You know, their attendance at every class is taken and recorded. So if they're not going to be at a class, that's going to be, you know, noted in Power School. Uh, we have, we do plan to provide supports so that um, you know, when you start to see that a student didn't attend a class. There's going to be someone who follows up with that child.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, I'll we're moving, okay, trying to move on. Okay, so this is sort of a newer updated slide since last night at 10 o'clock, I will say that. For grades four through six, they will basically be following the same explanation that I just shared on the hybrid model for grade seven through 12. So they'll be one week on, one week off. We will make sure all families are in sync in terms of the weeks. So if you have a middle high school student and a Quashnet um, learner in four through six, they will be in or out at the on the same weeks. Uh, same bus route cohorting, uh, the same expectation. The Mashpee educators are the ones who are creating the lessons and delivering the learn the instruction. Their learning requirement is a little less than the high school. So just to point out, the the Commissioner of Education has changed the school year. This 2021 school year from 180 required days to 170, so 10 less days. And with that, you evolve into this reduction in hours. They track total hours. So I believe at the high school, it's it's gone to 930 hours instead of 990. And whatever five times 170 is, that's the requirement for elementary. So they have a half an hour less of an expectation for learning um, outside. And that really does equate to what the school day is by the time you take out a lunch and recess and all the different things that sort of. Fill a day that are not necessarily directly content learning, that's where you land with the five hours. So it matches regardless. Again, attendance is taken for all classes, whether you're sitting in a chair in a building or you are at your table at home. Uh, they will be graded, all of their work will be graded as well. Um, at the lower elementary there or Quash, they use standard-based grading versus letter grades. Uh, and again, certain populations will be allowed or uh, prioritized to be there every day. And then the note here in red that the hybrid model for grades four through six will need to be implemented. Contingent on finding enough drivers for our additional buses and a significant number of parents driving students to school. So playing with this for two days, and I do want to greatly thank Assistant Superintendent Hanscom for diving very deeply into bus ridership. It's really looking to be a a higher mountain to climb than we anticipated. Anybody have any questions on hybrid in four through six?
So you're saying. Patty, you're saying that. Having a hybrid model is going to be difficult until you're looking at.
No, having an all-in-person, like landing and deviate from hybrid for four through six will be a challenge.
Sorry, may I add a comment? Um, it's deviating from hybrid for sure will be a challenge. And we can't guarantee at this moment that we could even do this hybrid. Until we know if we can have extra drive bus drivers and the number of parents who are willing to drive. So it's actually both. And your dogs are adorable, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, they they notice the kids running up and down the street. So you're are, I am inferring from what you're saying then is right now, unless there is sufficient um, drivers. Then we are looking at a remote model for grades four through six, is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily. I mean, we have the other option of of expanding hybrid to third grade, not that that's going to necessarily get us where we need to go. But we really want to have K through three where you're really mastering the skill of reading to be in person.
And and sorry, it's Hope again, just to add, we believe this model is the is doable. We just don't want to say to the committee or to the, you know, studio audience. That this is a definite thing we can do because there are too many unknowns at this moment. So the contingency I I referenced earlier in the meeting. It really needs that that is a contingency that we have to put out there. But we really do believe that we will be able to do it. So how's that for couching my my desk?
Well, you told me both sides of the argument then. A second ago, you said that it was going to be a challenge to get enough people. Now you're saying that, no, you think we can do it.
No, I I it will be a challenge to get people, but we wouldn't, it would be, it's not impossible. Going full in-person all the way through sixth grade is not is not a manageable. Uh, there's no option there. So this is the best option with the most kids in that we think is feasible. But we just can't guarantee it at this moment, that's all I'm trying to say.
Nicole?
Is done, finished?
I have another question, but I'll hold on to it for now.
Well, this is Nicole, I'm just going to clarify one thing. So when Dussey issued the guidance for busing, did they? Lift the requirement that we have to have enough bus space for every one of our students?
So yes, I did um, communicate to the commissioner that if we have families who are agreeing to transport their children to and from school. Do we still need to plan a bus seat for them? And he said, no, that during the pandemic, you would have the parents agree to um, transport their child to and from. If it became, you know, a hardship up, we would absolutely have to figure things out. But we do not have to include them as we plan forward if that's the commitment they can make to the district.
I see, so if we had a situation like a gas leak where we had to send kids home. Then if you were a kid that was being dropped off and picked up as a result of this new arrangement this year. Then the expectation would be that you would be there to pick up your child uh, in the event of an evacuation. Yes. Or would we be given some sort of special clearance to just bus everybody home in the case of an emergency and ignore the COVID requirements?
I'm sure it could probably go either way. I think we would strive to keep our kids safe as well on the bus. So whether we are able to uh, send them home in in tiers, like maybe we would do one run and then, I mean, it would be.
Not not tiers, but like tier.
Yeah, not crying, but like in um. Can't even get the word out of my head, but anyway, multiple shifts of busing, so that could be as well. And like I said, we do have extra buses that we can put into play.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just to point out with this hybrid model for grades four through six, where in the previous picture where you saw Mary-Kate in a classroom. And her classrooms can accommodate 15 desks. If we make the shift and and we go with the hybrid four through six. We basically go back to normal in a sense. So you would not have to have additional homerooms. You'd have, so she's planning to have seven sixth-grade teachers. They would be assigned their normal homeroom of 17 or 18 students. And but only half of them would come in in any given week. So we would probably leave about 10 or 10 desks in each of the rooms. Uh, but from a from a staffing perspective, we don't need as many teachers in this model. Where we were reallocating some of our people.
This is Kathy, um, I have one more question on the thing. Um, so if we're asking this model and for the hybrid model to work with busing. We need parents to be able to both drive and pick up. They can't opt to have their child ride the bus in the morning, then get picked up in the afternoon or vice versa. Like they will need to commit to picking, dropping off and picking up for this model to work, correct?
I mean, from a sort of a global perspective, yes. If we were really getting at the microscopic level, there are kids who are generally picked up regularly, but not necessarily with the morning piece. So I mean, could you possibly, you know, find one family that says, you know, I'm going to do the morning, but not the afternoon and the other way around? And it could be paired up in a way you probably could find a few of those scenarios. But in general, we're looking for people that commit to the in and the out.
Patty, may I, it's Hope, may I uh, just clarify that? Just because the analysis we did, Kathy, I did not, I I left seats for families who indicated that they needed the bus. Either one way or both ways. So those fam, because we would still need to keep a seat for them.
Right.
So I I wanted to make it clear though, that those kids, those families were included in bus ridership in the analysis that we did.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we switch? Okay, so then the hundred percent remote model, if we have to do that because of the way the virus is or um, either statewide. Or more specifically closer to our home. So remote learners are going to follow the in-person learning schedule with real-time face-to-face and recorded lessons delivered by our educators. Remote learning time is five and a half hours a day for MMHS students and five hours a day for Coombs. So for people, for students that are already engaged in the hybrid model, remote learning just means they do it every day. There's nothing going to change from what they've learned how to do. And we will make sure we're instructing our students on what it looks like, sounds like, and give them all the guidance. When we have them in school the first few days, in addition to all the safety practices. We are also going to give them as much guidance as we can for being a successful remote learner. So it will be, we'll have the ability to do that hands-on where we did not have that in the spring. Um, students are not expected to be on their devices during all of that learning time. So and I think I said that before. On a daily basis, remote learners will visually connect with their teachers for each content area and course. So if I'm a middle high school student and I have four courses on a certain day, I have to check in. When those courses begin and then I have to participate in whatever is being planned for that day. Uh, attendance is recorded daily for each class, grades are earned and support will be provided um, to our learners and families. And then what did I write down here? The above applies to the remote re, so what I was saying is they're already used to that. And then if you're a K to three student um, and we go remote, you're going to rely on your teacher probably through various platforms. And Google Classroom to provide the learning, the lessons. But there will be an expectation for in-person as well. This one gets to be a little bit more challenging because the learners are so young. And so it really is going to require a strong connection and some trainings with families. But ideally, we will have our K to three in the all-person model. So hopefully, they won't have to use remote unless we're all remote. So then what else I wrote down here was, oh, if a K to three student chooses to learn remotely and we are in the all-person. Uh, model, the remote learner may be taught by a Mashpee educator or through a district-provided learning management platform. So in this scenario, all of our kids go to school every day. There is no hybrid option. Um, and so what happens is if you're going to choose remote. We don't have a Mashpee educator who's going to necessarily be assigned to you unless, you know, that surfaces through um, input from our teachers. So if you had a K to three certified teacher in the Mashpee schools who does not or cannot, I should say cannot with medical backup. Teach in-person, they could be assigned to a group of remote learners. Um, and it would have to probably be a cross-age grouping, but that is a possibility. As well as it being a district-provided learning platform model. So those are the two options if you're choosing remote at the K to three level. Anybody have any questions on this? So the question about, I don't see a remote model in here, the remote model is built in. To the hybrid model, so the only questionable remote model that you might wonder about would be for K to three. Cause you don't see what it looks like in terms of those teachers would be pivoting and switching to all remote. If if they were in the all-person. And then if you are a family who doesn't want their child to be all in-person in K to three, then we have to explore options for them. We are responsible for educating their child. So we would figure out something that would work for them. But I can't guarantee what that would look like at this point.
Hey, so that was my question, Patty. So it would just be the hybrid model, but no kids in school, basically? I mean, they could still do exactly the same thing, correct?
Yeah, so yeah, so for grades four through 12, it's it's as if you've gone to only remote weeks.
This is Nicole, so I I'm, that's a point of confusion for me as well. So uh, you said that, for example, hybrid for the Quashnet, eight to nine students at home and eight to nine students in the room. Learning together every day on the same schedule. So each kid will be assigned a classroom. Regardless of whether they just choose to be hybrid or a hundred percent remote. It, because those are their only two choices for Quashnet, because there's no in-person, so.
Or four to six, yes.
Yeah, so does that mean that if you're a hundred percent remote or if you're in the hybrid model, you're in a classroom, you're getting the same. Remote instruction.
Yes.
You're you're just participating from your house instead of going into the classroom.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay, I, that was not clear to me the first time I looked at that, so thank you. And then what you're saying about the Coombe School and my only comment to what you were just saying about. You know, if we did have to go, if there are going to be teachers, I have a broader question about staffing, but I'll save that for a second. Um, if we had a, because there is no remote component to an in-person, completely in-person model.
Right.
Um, I mean, but we we're going to have like a a plan for that. Like we know what we're going to do if and when that happens, right? Because it it sounded a little.
No, the lesson planning that will take place in the Google classrooms will be in place. So a little different from March is we expect to have the devices for students. Um, I know they're little there and we have different ideas of how they can go back and forth to school. But we want to have that in place as well as some of the hard copy, I don't want to call them a workbook, but. The opportunity, the papers, instead of having to send home a packet, so that those would already be in place as extra tools for students to use. But they the actual, the schedule is expected to follow. And obviously, if you're in kindergarten, they're going to build a lot of play and free free play time into that schedule. But you will be following exactly what the teacher plans um, for those days.
Got it, okay. So the big difference, if I'm just paraphrasing what I'm hearing from you, is that when we had to shut down on March 13th. And we weren't coming back to school the following Monday. Some of our teachers were using Google Classroom and had all their, they were using slide decks and had all this um, you know, online content. And some weren't, and that was fine because we didn't have any reason to believe we would ever have to be fully online. And so now what you're saying is through the modern teacher training and uh, the other PD and activities since March. All of our teachers will be prepared to deliver online instruction when and if that happens.
Yes, and I've encouraged in. Yes, and I've encouraged in conversations with the association, like, you know, like they did, our teachers did a great job collaborating during the, the three-month closure. And I think we learned a lot about the power of that collaboration. So even as we go into this year and there is training at the beginning of the year, but you can work together as a grade-level team to create these slide decks. You can put your, yourself into it, providing the explicit instruction. But really, through collaborating, it should be less of a lift to create these lessons that can be either in a classroom or at home. And so I, our teachers are much, in a much better place than they were in March in, in terms of being able to easily switch over to totally remote.
Great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Like, I know there's a large group on this Zoom.
Patty, it's Dawn, I have a question and you may have covered and I just spaced out. But Casey Coombs, how is the preschool program going to work or not?
Well, we're, we're hoping that it continues to work in person. If it goes remote, that's the, the youngest, the younger the learners get, the more I worry about them not being in school because of the gaps that are resulting. I will say, in a conversation we met with the Boys and Girls Club this week, and they have a program, I think she said there's forty, a certain number of students, a good amount. And none of the students or none of the children participating are having any issues wearing their masks. So although they don't recommend, you know, preschool K and one to, to, they don't require, I should say, they don't require them to wear masks. I mean, I'm going to strongly encourage that as well. I don't, I, I think kids are resilient. I don't think they're necessarily going to have the challenges. But we will, you know, make sure we're getting them outside a lot. So back to your question is, we really need our pre-K, you know, Coombe's kids in the building.
Okay, and are we going to be maintaining social distancing in those classrooms? I don't see how that happens.
There are guidelines specific to that age group and there are ways to lessen sort of the sharing or the touching. You might have the different stations that, or centers, I should say, that those children get to play in. You might have to have a turn at it on a given day, you know, it's going to cycle through. There's a lot of ways to lessen the overlap. It's not going to necessarily be perfect all the time with the six feet, but we're going to, we're going to do our best.
Okay. The other question, you've kind of referenced it on your slides here, but the other group, which was an addendum, I guess, for special education services. And I didn't get a chance to go through all of it, but just quickly trying to skim through it. Have we assessed what that population will look like that would significantly benefit from in-school?
I don't know whether Dr. Curly would like to address that one. I know we've discussed it, so there would be a specific set of guidelines that would be in place, or I don't want to call it a checklist, but the reasons why a student would, not qualify, but more, would benefit from being in-person every day. I don't know.
Yeah, so I've been meeting with Russell Johnston pretty much almost weekly throughout the whole school closure period. During the summer, it's been a little less, about every other week. There's a list of criteria for students who fall into that category. So it's looking at the students that meet that criteria and kind of going through the list and speaking with the families to see if they're interested in having their child attend every day. It is something that we would recommend, as long as it's feasible to have them in the building every day. So there are specific criteria given to us from the state. Just started to kind of look through all of that information to identify those students. That answers your question.
So have you determined approximately how many individuals that may cover?
It's approximately twenty, district-wide.
Okay. That's, that's a lot smaller number than I thought it would, would have originally covered based. Is that exclude the current out-of-districts?
It does exclude the current out-of-districts, yes. We did not count those in our numbers, because they're not students that we would need to fit into our buildings.
Okay.
Or provide transportation to, in the, inside of the district.
Okay. And that's, that's twenty across all grade levels, or?
Yep, that's, it's twenty students, K to twelve.
Okay. All right, well, that's definitely a lot smaller number than I thought it was going to be, so.
Any questions on this? Okay, so that comes down to what the leadership team has recommended. And just to point out in the earlier slide, we have met on the four Mondays of July to discuss all three models that we've talked about tonight. So we've talked about the in-person learning model, the hybrid model, and then the totally remote. And the, the team that's been working on this on the Monday meetings is about thirty-five people on each of the teams. And it's a, we do have some students on it, parents from each school, teachers are on it, the nurse, trying to get the broadest stakeholder group. And we have looked at many things. And so then, in between those Monday meetings, the leadership team would meet sort of and continue to do the work of following the DESI guidance and looking at what we can and can't do. So at this point, on this July twenty-ninth, the Coombe School, in the survey that we're going to talk about shortly, that will go out to families Thursday or Friday, probably Thursday, Coombe School parents are going to ask to be, to choose between either an in-person, an in-person model of learning for their child or a remote learning model. So it's like an either-or question. Quashnet School parents, if you're in grade three, you're going to be asked to choose between an in-person or remote. And then if you are a parent or guardian of a student in grades four through six, your question will be hybrid for your child or remote. And then Mashpee Middle High School parents, they are, their one, their A or B question is hybrid or remote. Do you have any questions on what, why we landed, I mean, or how that is for a parent that they have those choices?
So this is a survey, not a absolute selection?
Well, actually, I, I used the wrong term. It's, we're calling it a commitment decision. It really needs to be firm at this point, because we can't continue to plan with sort of the back and forth. So the idea of the commitment decision, I don't know what the final name is, but is that we are going to share, you know, the slide deck. We have an FAQ site. I will be recording a video this week. So we're going to try to, the best we can with where we're at today, inform our parents of all that went into the decision so that, and what it will look like for their students in the school setting and what remote learning looks like, so they can make as informed a choice as they can at this point in time. But it is being considered a commitment. It's not quite the engagement ring, but it's a commitment ring.
Once they make this commitment, they can't change their minds, correct?
Yes.
What? I mean, only based on, I mean, if nothing changes, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. If nothing, yes.
Yeah, I mean, assuming everything else is the same, they don't change their mind. But if three weeks from now, we have full-blown spread on the Cape, then we're, we're having a whole new conversation, I assume, right?
Right, or if we're in a really good place, more of those remote learners will want to come back in person.
I love your optimism, Patty.
Well, we have to have optimism, optimism to offset the pessimism.
So my question back earlier in your flow chart, you talked about you had a, a decision point that had to do with staffing levels. And so can we meet staffing needs? But we haven't yet determined what staff are willing to return. And we know that at least forty-five percent of them are in this high-risk category. So how can we lock ourselves into one of these plans or any of these plans without having firm commitments from our staff? How does that work?
Well, there is an assumption in meeting the staffing needs that those who are currently on our staff are going to be participating or performing their job. They may not, you know, there could be a few cases where it doesn't work that they're in-person and hopefully, we can accommodate that. But when it comes down to it, we need people to be in these positions. And so there will be sort of a procedure, I'm not trying to be doomsday, but I think we are creating a very safe environment, both for learners and workers. I, I would be considered in one of those risk categories. I am not at all concerned with being in a classroom. And, and we've talked about it, that there may be cases where we have to cover classes because of the concern with subs, that's a big concern. The hybrid model does allow us with a little more wiggle room, because you're not going to have as many kids in a classroom at the same time. And there are ways to sort of look at that a little bit differently. And then I really want to do the best we can to protect that K to three in-person model for those youngest learners. So to your question, we are basing our staffing needs being that we can meet them based on the fact that we have our current staff able to perform their job. We do have a few additional people that have shifted from a being a paraprofessional into a teaching job, because they are licensed. So that's something they volunteered to do. And we've looked at hiring a few extra, adding a few extra educators.
Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up, this Nicole again, is so do we have the ability to hire teachers if we find that we're short and, and need staffing? And how quickly can something like that really happen?
Well, that's why we really need that commitment from our staff as well by mid-August, because you can't necessarily find people when the school year is going to start. Now, we haven't looked at the calendar, but with the ten days that the Commissioner of Education has given to all districts in terms of he wants, he's given ten extra days for professional development for staff, we're looking at a September sixteenth start date. So if we get the commitment in mid-August, that does give us a little bit of time to find somebody to replace another individual.
Okay, that, that was my question, thank you.
And have we, have we secured adequate PPNE supplies?
Stacy, are you on here? I think Stacy's on here.
I am, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the buttons. Hello, yes.
By the way, Stacy's our nurse, our district.
Hi, I'm Stacy Skokel, the nurse coordinator, yes. Yes, we have enough of the masks and gloves and things and hand sanitizer to start us off for students and staff. And other things are coming in and anticipated. And with a September sixteenth start, we're definitely good that way, but yes, we do.
That's an, and that's an ever-ongoing pursuit of items. So we're, we're looking at certain things that are a little harder to get, but we're moving in the right direction and we think we'll be good.
Will something be coming out in regard to the protocols related to student health and changes in student health during the day and, and how that whole process will work?
Yes, and Stacy can address this too. There were guidelines issued by the Department of Education and those are linked in our FAQ document as well. And Stacy, if you want to address any further of.
Sure, we will be communicating. It's a lot, very similar to what we already do for illness with the symptoms and things to stay home. We are following what's in the guidelines through the CDC that are now linked into the DESI guidelines that came out. That, but basically, asking parents to self-check students for symptoms that are COVID-related. We do realize that they are very similar at times to the common cold and we know it's allergy season. But there's very clear guidelines on the CDC and DESI website that we will be following and those will be communicated. And we're just going to ask again, as a partnership, if students are sick or staff are sick, our message is that we stay home and follow the guidelines and the criteria. Again, it's clearly a nice little rubric and checklist. So if you follow that, you should be good.
Thank you. All right, so. Okay, so this is what I basically already said when we were.
I'm sorry, Patty. I, I was trying to, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't push my unmute quick enough. Well, I didn't get a chance to jump in when you were talking about the teachers potentially not wanting to come back. Has there been any discussions already with how that is going to be parsed out with the teachers? Is this going to be a sick bank situation? Are they going on leaves of absence? How's that working, HR-wise?
They're, based on guidelines, it's not, you know, if a teacher can or cannot come back due to medical issues, there is sort of a, a process. It's not that you are going to land in the sick bank for the whole year. So there is a, there is a, on an individual basis, it's going to be assessed. And then there are certain routes to leave that a member can pursue. FMLA and various things. In many cases, within a short amount of time, though, it's, I believe it lands in two-thirds salary. It doesn't, it's not carrying you for the whole year or anything.
And it, I mean, this is one of the few things tonight that lands squarely in our purview. I would love to get some more details on that for the next meeting, so we can start talking about how we're going to pay for that.
How we're going to pay for that.
Well, in terms of, if we get a, an unknown number of teachers who decide not to come back, we have to replace those teachers at some point and we potentially pay them, depending on what the checklist you were speaking of, if it goes to two-thirds pay or sick bank or FMLA or something like that.
Yeah, we can, we can revisit that. It's my understanding, though, that you don't, a teacher does not, is not carried, just carried. So there would be some decisions coming down. Obviously, it's different if, if someone contracts COVID and it is linked to a case in the classroom. The educator is not going to be charged his or her own sick leave. But then there's other avenues, you know, related to personal lives as well. So there's a lot of layers to that. That's an HR issue that we can definitely share and more information. Or there's plenty of really good graphics out there that allow you to visually see what, what the options are.
No, no problem. I know you're, I'm asking you to look into a crystal ball. I just, it'd be interesting to know what our options are. And, you know, we probably should make some assumptions for going forward, so we can start, you know, doing the dollars and cents.
Sure. So we already talked about these three options that a family would choose. I don't think I have to repeat those, I just did on the previous page. Any questions, though?
Sorry, I just realized my camera wasn't on. Hello, everybody.
What's the date they would have to make that decision? Or is it on here?
It's going to be in mid-August. I haven't picked the date yet, but in talking to the other superintendents in part of our groups that we discuss, it looks to be amid August is the consensus among others. So I think that's fair. That would be a month in advance of when students return, two weeks before teachers would return. But even when teachers return, which is tentatively scheduled for August thirty-first right now, and then there would be ten workdays that would get us to the September sixteenth Wednesday. Teachers will be in the building, but they will not necessarily be interacting with anyone in person. They can participate in some of the trainings virtually from their rooms. They can work, you know, do anything that they, but we're not asking them to come together in any large group at all. Okay, I forgot I'm doing this slide. Okay, next steps is the district will send an informational video to families and staff this week. So my goal is, I, my goal is Friday, but it may have to be Thursday, depending on what we want to make sure families know prior to receiving their, their confirmation decision form. So we have created, I'm just going to click on this for a minute. We've created a FAQ site that will also be going out to families, looks like this. And it allows you to, and it's, it's an ever-changing document, so it's not perfect. And if you notice up here, it says currently under construction. So if anyone goes in here and like, has any kind of issues, please let us know. But understand it's not finished. So anyway, it's by categories. We alphabetize the categories and you would click on a category and it would take you to bus, whoa. Sorry, no, that's not good either. Let me go back here. Let's go back to this one. Very gentle here, let me get down to buses.
I think you're in your.
I know.
Edit mode instead of.
That's probably, well, there we go. So for each area of questions, there is a page that you can go to. There are questions there. So the way this works, you can always go back to the main page. You can always go to this other page, which I'll show you in a minute. So there are some of the questions we've put together so far. And then you can click on the question, it takes you down below or you can just scroll. So this will continue to be growing and I have, yeah. So also down here for families that really wanna dive in, that's the guidance from the Department of Education. So you could read through it as well. The second thing linked on that last slide, which I'm gonna go to from here, this is a document or a site that we're, oh, come on, here we go. So eventually, this is also under construction. But this will, all of these will be very easy to access. They will definitely be on the website. These, they will be specifically emailed the links to families as well. But what will end up happening, so this is sort of an overview that we've already talked about. It's 935 hours at the high school requirement and 850 at Coombs and Quash. You'll be able to link back to this slideshow. Those were guidelines from DSE. That one has not been updated yet. But within each of these, you would be able to click and then again, you would click. Oops, let's see. So this will eventually get populated with everything that would help a family understand what in-person learning looks like at the Coombs School. So that is the goal of this site. So let me go back to my. So those were those two sites. Anybody have any questions on those?
Patty, this Nicole, I just have a quick question. So is there, I've heard a lot of districts using something called Schoolology as like a new tool. Are we making an investment in some sort of, you know, where we had used Edgenuity temporarily? Is there gonna be any new framework like that in association with our learning plans for the school year?
Yeah, so I think you might be referring to FAMAS. Schoolology is a, an offshoot or a part of our Power School system. And as I understand it, it's a learning platform where teachers can, I wouldn't say deposit, but store lessons that students can access. So the idea is eventually that we will have one site, and it may be that learning site that we were just in, that you would go to and you would be able to click on. So if it was one of your children, they would be, you would know where to go. You would click on and you would have access to everything that you needed from those teachers. So that is something that we are going to have in place.
So that, so our framework, we're building ourselves. We're not using some other model.
No, we're not pre, well, yes.
I thought, I thought Schoolology was like an LMS. So it's like just, it's kinda like Google Classroom. It's like a packaging kind of.
And I don't know if Dr. Hans can expand. My understanding of it within the Power School platform was it was an opportunity where teachers could deposit their learning. But it could also, I'm sure, probably allow you to access other learning that's already been created by others. I'm not sure though.
Yeah, I, this is hope, yes, I can speak to that. Schoolology may ultimately be the way we end up going, not for the school year, but it is tied to Power School, which is our student management system. But yes, as the superintendent indicated, it is like a Google, it is a management sort of ability to capture information. And for school year 2021, we are building all of our planning, synchronous and asynchronous through the Google platform. So through Google Sites, Google Classroom and then Google Slides and Docs and the rest. So that's the plan for the fall.
Okay, so that even beyond Quashnet or, you know, so in all the grades? We're gonna, okay, thank you.
And yes, at every school, just as part of the modern teacher professional development that more than 60 Mashpee educators are participating in this summer, each building will have a landing page. So the landing, the district will have a landing page. And on that landing page, you can find a button for each school. You'll click on your school and you'll go to that landing page, which will have all of the buttons for the classes. And then each teacher will have a landing page, which has all of their sort of information, contact information, and also the links to get into whatever their learning management system is going to be. So, but, but again, we're doing it through Google.
Right.
Big deal, thank you.
Similar to this site that we did visit, that potentially will evolve into the district's landing page. And you would click onto the school. And then within the schools page, then you would then see an icon or maybe it's the teacher's picture, but it'll all be very click, 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 and you land in the teacher lesson. So there's, it will be very, much more user-friendly and targeted to allow a family not to have to turn things in in three different methods. It'll all be very streamlined.
Got it, cool, thanks.
Some of the PD is involved with.
On that same, under that same guise, has DSE, I know they mentioned before that they were gonna have a Commonwealth-wide like learning platform that they were gonna provide to the schools, has that gone anywhere?
Yeah, so today they, it was asked during the question. They received two responses to their RFP and they were expecting to announce in the next few days which one they were going with. But they would not disclose when a superintendent asked which ones they were today. So yes, they're, so they will also have that option. And we, as I understand it, would be able to purchase a license per student. And so it could be very individualized based on what a family needs, if that's their option. I think for most families, obviously, if we're hybrid four through 12, they're all set because they're gonna just stay connected to the teacher. There could be some outliers within that population that might benefit from this state-level platform. But we'll take a look at it to see what it provides for K to three in case that is something we want to explore for anyone that chooses remote. So, so the third bullet is we are going to, we plan to send a confirmation decision Google form to parents and guardians later this week. Once that's sent, it is a very tight turnaround, but we will be sending reminders. And then we will have staff who will actually make phone calls to all of the non-responders because we are, we need 100% participation. So if someone doesn't really wanna do it as a form and they prefer that, you know, personal conversation, they'll, they'll have one of those. So it's whatever they, they choose. We are hoping to have everything back by, I think that's Friday, August 7th, just as a final way to confirm that we are moving in the right direction with what we're able to provide with a plan that has to, a final plan that's gonna be due to DSE on that following Monday. So that's tight. We hope to be able to look at that information in a very tight turnaround, which is really a weekend and a Monday, to see if there's anything that we need to adjust based on the information that parents have provided with us. It's going to be a very short form. It will have a question about the busing or the transporting of your child to and from school. And then like we said, it's basically gonna say, if I'm a, if I am a, you know, K to three student or parent of a K to three student, I'm going to be either choosing in-person or remote. They can also choose homeschooling, which is not remote. Homeschooling, you are, you disconnect from the district in a way and you get your plan approved and you basically are responsible for all aspects of that learning as a homeschooler. So that's a different situation, not to throw that in and confuse anyone. So on August 10th, that Monday, we will submit our final learning plan to the Department of Education. Also, like I said, by Friday, the 7th, we are supposed to get, excuse me, feedback from the Department of Education on our draft plan. So then it's, then we will continue to work on our to-do list as we are ready, as we ready for opening. And that's a long list of minutia details to bigger issues. But most of it's really an operational perspective at that level. The anticipated start date for our staff is Monday, the 31st. And the anticipated start date for the students is Wednesday, September 16th. We have and we probably will look at some options to bring students in for possibly some training, not with teachers, but with other staff members. Prior to the 16th is an option, maybe even late into August, I'm not sure about that. But the first few days, like I said before, of students in-person, they will be receiving, you know, specialized training on the safety and health protocols. And then we will also be giving them really explicit instruction on what they should be doing when they are remotely learning. So that was something, you know, very much missing. I know some teachers did a great job in the last break of creating little videos that students could access that helped them sort of better maneuver themselves within the online world. But I will say, you know, just like our teachers are in a much better place, our students in some respects, when it comes to navigating their learning through technology, are in a better place too.
Patty, this is Nicole, can I ask one follow-up on that? So if for grades four through 12, based on the plan that you've outlined, our students would not all be starting on the same day?
No, you would have, so we would look at that and we've had conversations about whether to have the kids who are going to do, so we're cohorting them Mashpee Week or Falcon Week. So we only have three days of school that week. So we may go with, you start with your cohort A on Wednesday. Then I would probably suggest we do two days of cohort B to get them up to speed because then B goes remote for the whole week. And then we would bring A back that second, in the next week for their in-person. So I want to make sure we see every student in that first week, whether they get two days or one.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Patty, is the, this is George. The staff decision, are we asking for that by the 7th also?
No, that's a little bit later. I see that as sort of mid-August. It could go sooner. I just, it could go after we've shared everything that's in this slide deck, the video that I'm gonna create. And I just want teachers to be able to spend some time so they fully understand what they are committing to, what they can or cannot do. Because in a hybrid model for grades four through 12, any teacher is only going to be having, you know, roughly eight students sitting in front of them. And they're very far spaced. So it's not like you're walking into a classroom with 22 children.
Okay.
So, and then those that are in the full in-person, they're spaced out as well. So it does have a different feel to it. I think if teachers saw what the classroom looked like and they're welcome to come in anytime they want to see what their space is. The custodians are really busy making sure they've gotten every classroom laid out to the best that they can. In some cases, teachers have not, you know, have not been able to come in yet to remove some of their personal items or extra furnishings that need to get out of the room. So it's a little harder to lay those classrooms out. But we do, we have set up storage spaces. Storage is tight. We may be getting a few storage units on-site at some of the schools. I know we're working with the DPW on that because it's not necessarily a place to put all of the excess desks. Because if you think about the high school where there might have been, you know, 20 to 25 desks in a space before, we only need to put 10, or we only can only put 10 in because of spacing. And it's not like we need those anywhere else. So they all have to get stored someplace. So there's a lot of logistics with that involved as well. But we're making progress. We've also looked into 30 by 30 tents that are actually cheaper to purchase. And we would look to be putting two of those up at Coombs, two at Quash and three at the middle high school. And those would allow for outdoor learning. And we would tentatively leave them up, hopefully hoping for a mild winter. We would leave them up quite a long time. And it would also, in how they're positioned, may allow for some outdoor eating as well.
Patty, you had indicated that we would hear from MIA in regard to extracurricular activities sometime in the middle of August?
So MIAA is the governing group for sports at the high school. And they are, the only thing they've issued so far is that nothing can begin before September 14th. And I think many of the sports are trying to be as creative as they can to put safety measures in place that would still allow them to play. You know, you look at golf, that's pretty easy to continue to play. They have not resolved yet and that came up today in a meeting we had with, I think, DSE. Or yeah, it was DSE. How does that work with cohorts when, you know, okay, I'm here on, because I'm in here in Mashpee Week, so it's easy for me to go after school and do my sport. But if I'm not, if I'm remotely learning, I have to get there. So there's logistics involved with that.
Right, and we, we provide a bussings right now for some of that? Has that been taken into consideration?
Well, I suppose we could look at extra, we'd have to look at who's playing what sport and where they live to see what kind of a route. And if we had an extra bus, I'm sure we could, and the money that would go with it, we'd have to. That's another layer to the onion. As we describe it, the situation is an onion with its many layers and because it makes you cry. So it's the perfect analogy. Does anyone have any other questions about anything that we've said or any concerns? Or this is a great opportunity to share so that everyone else can hear the answer to your question.
I was interested if there's been discussion on, you know, any kind of triggers, not to go down the pessimist hole, but triggers to go to remote learning or.
So obviously, I don't know what the cutoffs are in terms of the numbers you'd have to have. I know I looked at the, the daily piece from the Cape today. And in terms just of hospitalizations, there's no one, no one COVID in FAMAS Hospital and there are two at Cape Cod Hospital. But we don't know that. And I know Stacy has her handle on sort of what it looks like when you'd have to sort of shut down a school. The six-foot distancing, which is very helpful, and Stacy can probably expand on this. You don't have to contact trace in that environment if people have been masked, you haven't been exposed unmasked. Or Stacy, maybe you could speak to that before I tangle myself up with.
No, sure. And actually, that was what the guidance were saying. But then the July 17th guidance, actually, on page three for in-school settings for elementary, it's a little different, but that's why we do these cohorts. So it'll be a little easier to contact trace. However, if you read that guidance, in that paragraph, it states that elementary school students in that classroom, so let's just take Casey Coombs, because we say it's 11 and that teacher, that group is considered a cohort. So that group would have to be considered a close contact. But we would, it's easier to contact trace when we have cohorts instead of going everywhere. So that's why we know that that group of 11 has been together with a teacher or two. And that's where we take attendance and go from there. So with everybody communicating, working together and making the six-foot distance, that does make it easier, again with masks on, except for those mask breaks, which again, are very important, but we have plans for that. We'll be doing a lot of education and teaching. So there is a lot that goes into it behind the scenes, but we're working hard at coordinating all that.
And this, oh, I was just gonna say two things. In terms of elementary specials, students will still be participating in the specials. We have, all the teachers are still in place. We're going to a five-day rotation, not a six-day rotation. So over the course of the year, a student would have five specials. But in order to reduce sort of the exposure to the specialist teacher, they, we are going to do sort of a fifth of the year, however many days that is. You would do only one special. So you might have art first and then you're gonna have PE for the next, and you'd have it every day for that period of time because that allows for much. for much less exposure to that specialist teacher versus seeing every kid in the building every, you know, week, that's too much. And the other piece related, my mind was thinking about buses. The hand sanitizer is applied when you get on the bus, the masks are expected, the windows are down. The thing with the contact tracing, what Stacy was saying too, they're not six feet apart on a bus. And so I do think we are the ones who will be assigning seats based on all the information we've gathered from who's going to ride the bus and who's not. From day one, they will know their seat. And we've talked about different ways of whether, you know, you get on and you go all the way to the back. But then, you know, if you're a kid who gets off at Quash first, you're gonna walk, you're still walking past Coombs kids. So we have a little figuring to do when it comes to that, that piece of it as well.
Yeah, Stacy, I guess that was the question that popped in my mind. So you're trying to put everyone in little cohorts, but how do you keep from contaminating or cross contaminating the cohorts? You know, i.e. the bus has multiple cohorts, right? Walking down the hallway, you have that, going to the restroom, you have that.
So we'll be doing things on the schedule. If you look at some of the guidance and there's, we're still working on it, we talked, spoke about it this week with DPW. There's things like one-way hallways or separating in the hallways, markings on the floor for six feet apart. Staggering R, not everybody goes to lunch at the same time. And it will be, I believe we're still at Quash and Casey's, actually everywhere. Lunch will be separated by desks in the cafeteria and gyms. Kids, students will have their assigned seating. We have time, worked with DPW very well to make sure there's time for disinfecting, not just cleaning in between and that things dry, so it's safer eating. Like everyone's been doing a great job looking at all of these scenarios and pieces. It's gonna take an effort on everybody's part. We'll work together and work out the kinks as we do it, but there's no perfect, you're right, there's no guarantee that something won't happen, but we're doing our due diligence. Again, the expectation is grades two through 12 and all the staff always have their mask on when they're inside. Except for it's if your mask breaks, those will be under, you know, 10 minutes or less. Trying to get outside, as Patty said, as much as possible. So every, and hand washing, hand sanitizing, doing all our due diligence that way.
So may I just ask a quick question? I'm so sorry, but to Mr. Gorman's question about the, when do you close the school? Stacy, there was start-stop protocols in the guidance as well, right?
Correct, so at the end of, I believe it's the 22nd guidance that came out. So it's a combination of working with DP, sorry, Board of Health and Department of Public Health and looking at our numbers and administration and that contact tracing. So that's where the daily attendance, so looking at our cohorts. But it is laid out, I believe it's almost the last page.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify to Mr. Gorman that there are definite rules around start-stop from, given to us from Desi.
And that document is listed on that, one of the slides and it's, you can link into it.
The last question I have was, so I know we've always encouraged our educators to share with each other and they have facilities available to do that. I, the teachers lounges, et cetera. Are we modifying those for social distancing also, or what are we doing?
So the guidelines will be provided to staff, they're adults though, so if they choose to go in and sit with a friend, we're not policing that, we're just encouraging them to make a decision that's best for them. They will, I mean, there's obviously options, but no one is forcing them to go and sit in a staff lounge. But if they do, they could space out to a limit, I mean, but they're, they're not overly crowded spaces to begin with.
Okay.
And to add to that, part of the staff training that they'll be receiving is talking about other options and how to work on physical distancing and the guidelines do speak to that also about encouraging separation or different areas or staying in your space, going outside, those kind of things. So that will be all education that staff will be receiving.
Because all of our teachers do have the option, they don't have children in their room when it is their lunchtime as well. So they can choose to eat in their classrooms if they want, which many do regularly.
And just to clarify, we're, so we're not gonna set a policy for like mandatory mask usage or mandatory six foot distancing for the staff? Even when they're not teaching?
Even when they're not, it's an expectation, but.
The requirement is mask at all times, grades two through 12 and staff, anytime we're inside a building with six feet apart. So yeah, that is an expectation.
Jeff's asking whether we, the school committee, are going to be setting a policy? That that's our policy? Or is that just, do we not need to do that?
Yeah, and the caveat, and I apologize, but the caveat, the reason I'm asking this question is because the, as I understand it, and Nurse Stacy, please correct me, but as I understand it, the, what we're, what our saving grace is with respect to quarantine is being able to verify that the members of the cohort maintained masks and six foot distance. But if we don't have the, if we're expecting that to happen and not mandating it, I'm curious how we're gonna be able to prevent that quarantine if someone comes down with a 19.
So it is my understanding, and you guys can correct me also if I'm wrong, but these are the guidelines we're following, following that basically say we will wear a mask at all times inside and we will practice physical distancing of six feet. The caveat to this is that page three of these guidelines for cohorting, the advantage is if everyone wears their masks inside and stays six feet wherever they're at, hopefully 15 minutes or less, we don't have to worry as much contact tracing. However, if you look at the guidelines and we're in that classroom, that cohort will have to follow the guidelines if we have a positive. So let's just say, I know we have Mrs. Jones or Mrs. Smith, whatever, that classroom, that, a student in that pod of 11, cohort of 11 students test positive, that teacher and that cohort is considered a cohort and does have to follow the isolation criteria, even if they've been masked and six feet apart. But why we did six feet apart and masked is so that if we have other people that come in and they're short brief, everybody, the expectation is everybody's masked and six feet apart, it shortens our cohorts. And by staying in cohorts, the ultimate goal is it's that cohort that has to isolate and or quarantine, depending on the symptoms and the checklist, not the whole school, because everybody else has been six feet apart and masked and not in that cohort. That make sense?
And Jeff.
Absolutely, thank you.
Jeff, to your point too, the association president, Mary Stickley, who is on here, and she and I have been meeting weekly to develop an MOA and that is something that, if it's gonna live somewhere, it can live there. In terms of the masking and the expectation for staff.
Anyone else have any questions? Dawn, were you done?
I, I guess I had a question. So is that not Stacy, a state requirement or it's being just a recommendation?
So these are the Desi protocols that we are to follow and on page one, it basically, it starts off with everyone will be masked, grades two through 12 and all staff and encouraging K through K and one to be masked. So these are the protocols that we're following. So how you all interpret that, but these are from the CDC recommendations that also keep changing. I, I won't be surprised if some of this does change a little, but I don't foresee many more changes at this time. But the expectation and the requirement slash the way to stop the spread is masks, wearing your masks, washing your hands and watching your space. And six feet is, we know, helps stop the spread, so.
No, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just.
I understand, but they, the July 17th does say protocols for responding, so. But these are the Desi guidance, so I don't know how you all interpret from the school committee perspective is guidance.
Requirement.
A requirement, so that, I'll defer back to you.
Anything else, Dawn?
Nope, I don't, do not have an answer for that, thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, my only other question, you know, I was reading through the FAQ page that you sent and I saw recess mentioned. Can you just kind of explain what that's gonna look like with keeping the distancing and how, how is that gonna work? Cause it was a little confusing to me as I'm trying to picture it in my mind, if everybody's keeping their distance yet outside trying to put that energy out. What, how is that gonna work?
And it's definitely still, you know, as we think more about it, we come up with some add-ons to the plan, but I believe that the cohorts will, you, you can sort of assign areas of a, of a playground. So you could control some of that cohort piece. I think students will enjoy having fun, they'll still be talking to each other, but they'll leave their masks on. I did request, and I know the association is interested, so I'm waiting to hear from the town of adding, switching a night custodian to a day, to the day shift as an added person, because the regular custodian has his normal to-do list. But having that extra custodian in the building that could address some more frequent disinfecting of bathrooms, both staff and student and a lot of the common areas. We talked about this the other day with a group that upon arrival, all of the, the doors, the designated doors to enter will be open. Classroom doors will be kept locked but open. So we're, and bathroom doors will be, if there are those in the, will be left open. All of the toilets and the sinks in all the buildings have been changed to touch free. And so really, the only thing you'd have to touch would be a stall. But both, anytime you go back into a classroom, you need to hand sanitize. So, and then if those areas are addressed periodically, that will be helpful as well. And that to the lunches, there is an expectation of this sort of disinfectant fog or mist gets applied and it, I believe it needs a 10 minute time to dry. And I think the principal, Baustrachi, he has a eating zone in half of his gym and the other one is in his calf. And I believe he'll be able to alternate between the two so that we don't have to worry about building in that 15 minutes. And then at the elementary school, I think it will probably change from an original plan, at least at the Quash, where now we're hi, if we're hybrid four to six, that does change the numbers a little bit. So we probably would be better off as well there. But I just want to emphasize if I'm possibly having the last word here, but maybe I'm not, but I think that we have provided for every family, I mean, I want to value their choice. So if they want their children to come to school and they're comfortable with the plan we have in place, that's what they should choose. And if they're not, they have an option of choosing remote. At the high school, obviously, or grades four through 12, it's hybrid, but that hybrid involves a week of being in person. So obviously, if that's the, the difficulty families have and they're not ready for that yet, then they would just choose remote. And so I feel like we've covered the, what a family would need in terms of their, their, the options, we've given them options.
Nicole?
Maybe not a buffet of options, but it's definitely an option that I think they, they could live with.
Yeah, and I, this is Nicole, I just want to say, you know, because we sort of went through with questions throughout, we didn't really sort of take a step back initially to thank you and the team for the incredible amount of work and effort and just, I mean, this like scenario planning doesn't even cover it, there are so many layers, as you said. So I, and, and I have to say, we were fortunate to be able to do protocol appropriate sort of viewing of the classrooms. I didn't get to see all of them, but up at the middle high school. And you know, it was an emotional experience for me to see what the school will actually look like for the school year. And I do, I listened to your speech at graduation, I do think there is tremendous opportunity in not just what has already happened, but what's moving forward will happen in Mashpee. And so I hope that you know that my questions and interests are not at all meant to be criticisms of you or the team. To me, it's just prudence, it's just asking questions that people are asking me and even just drawing upon my, my thought process as a parent, you know, of two kit, with two kids in different schools and sort of how that model works, so. But I don't want to lose sight of, you know, all the amazing work that you've done and I want to applaud your commitment to, you know, our students and our families. I know that you and the team have their best interests in mind and I think we'll get through all of this together. So I just wanted to say thank you if that, that didn't come across earlier.
No, 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 thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And the only thing I can emphasize here is that it seems to be changing almost daily as to what's going to happen next and you know, just stay tuned, I'm trying to keep you guys apprised of at least the major things as I hear about them and pass them on to you. I may be missing some, but if I get any more additional information that is applicable, I'll definitely pass it on, you know, email style. Next item on the agenda is tentative school committee meeting on August 10th at 5:30 PM. With the way everything is going, I suggest that we need this, but I'll leave that up to the committee.
I personally do think you need it because the final plan is due on the 10th and I'm, the message, whether you consider it a vote or approval, there's definitely an expectation from Desi that we have partnered between superintendent and leadership team and school committee and that we have an alignment in our moving forward plans. So I think you should, we, we should meet again.
Okay, I'll take a motion to meet and at 5:30 on August 10th.
Mr. Chair, I move to meet on August 10th at 5:30 to.
Could I ask one question?
Thank you, Jeff, Patty?
I just had a question, is there any consideration of possibly meeting a little bit before that? Not that I'm anticipating any significant changes coming from the meeting, but if there are, I, I mean, I have to get that in on the 10th.
Yeah, I was gonna ask why we're waiting until the day it's due. Is, is that just based on your availability, George, or?
Oh, no, no, this was just a date that we picked three weeks ago or something that is to have an extra meeting in August, that's not anything to do with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Most of the administrative team is not available next week. Or the, not next week, no, next week.
So what, what would sooner look like for you, Patty, if that, if we were to have it sooner than the 10th?
I can't have it sooner than the 10th.
Oh.
That's why we, we landed on.
Patty, you meant earlier in the day. Meant earlier in the day.
Sorry, I meant earlier in the day, not earlier in the month.
Oh, earlier in the day, I'm sorry, misunderstood you, I thought you were talking about the prior week.
No. I was just, even if it was a five o'clock start, I just feel, you know, I'm not anticipating because we will be in communication with each other so that you'll know, nothing's going to be a surprise, but you know.
Would it be possible to do it that morning?
I'm okay with any time, cause tax season's over, so.
Or even in the midday might be only because we're, keep in mind on the 7th is when all of the input from our parents is due and you know, having a little time to look at that and a little time on Monday morning would be helpful. I'm kind of looking anywhere like in the three to five range as a start.
I would be available for that.
At three o'clock, Nicole?
Yeah, I, right now, my calendar is pretty open on the 10th, so if you guys tell me, I can lock that in and then work around my that commitment.
How about everybody else? Any problems?
I'm pretty open on the 10th as well.
I can meet anytime after two.
Okay, that's three, Dawn?
That'll work.
Okay, Jeff, were you willing to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion to have a meeting on August the 10th at 3:00 PM. I will amend my motion to have a meeting on August 10th at 3:00 PM.
Motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I second. Listen, Nicole.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn, sorry, Jeff?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes. Five to zero unanimous vote for meeting on August 10th, starting at 3:00 PM.
And that meeting probably will also include a calendar, proposed calendar change that you can either, obviously, if you need time to digest, we'll put it as a potential vote, but otherwise, the 19th. But I think for families, they need to have a little concrete heads-up that we're not coming back as soon as they might have thought.
It's the, George, one thing I noticed today, I, I couldn't find a calendar invite for this meeting. Can we just make sure that for that one, especially because it's during my workday, I just want to make sure that I have the Zoom info readily available?
Yeah, so that would be on me. I thought I invited everybody when I set it up.
Oh, well, maybe, maybe it was, George had sent it out before, so maybe I just didn't search on your.
No, I didn't have a calendar invite for today either.
Likewise, so I think it was just. But we can do that.
We'll make sure that happens next time.
All right, thank you. And Patty, one other thing, you mentioned the commitment requirement. Might not be the worst idea to have everybody talking about this, this, as it's this week that, that this request is out, like on our Facebook, on our, you know, the Mashpee Outreach site. Maybe even Rodney's willing to have it on the town Facebook to remind folks to, to fill this out. I think maybe if we could just sort of put the, keep the, a daily reminder every day, hey, did you make, you know, did you send your commitment response in, or whatever you want to call it? That sounds a little bit like NCAA talk. I don't know what we should call that, but. But I think that would be, I'd be happy to, you know, shake the trees a little bit.
Yeah, so in addition to sort of the normal email that has the link to the form, which sometimes goes unnoticed, we will make sure that we also, I send the call. But I think as, at the recommendation of Consuelo as well, is getting parents connected to then tell other parents. She found that helpful to make sure that everybody was spreading it as best we could. So we'll, we'll get sort of a mini-army to, to make sure everybody knows about it.
All right, we are now down to the public comment.
Mr. Chair, this is Hope. There are two comments in the chat. One is from Mr. Gorman, and I feel like it was just informational, but I would defer to him if he wants that as part of this conversation. But otherwise, there's a question from Jen Blackburn that asks, will preschool families have a remote option, or will they just opt out of school?
I, my, I want to do what's best, but I really feel the expertise of the teacher at the preschool level is pretty important, and it's, it's a challenge to duplicate remote. Now, we could provide them with activities and advice and tools, but I think at that level, it's really important to try to get them in. But I, I guess we'd assess it on a case-by-case basis, but we definitely want to support a family that chooses to keep their child home as, in terms of the expertise of that teacher guiding them to, well, here's what I think you should be doing. So obviously, I want to make sure we take care of our preschoolers.
Thank you, Hope, and thank you, Jen, for the question. Any other comments from anybody in the audience, public comments or questions?
George, this is Mary Stickley. I'd like to just also reiterate that the administration, principals, superintendent have been working diligently to figure things out. They're meeting regularly. And Hope to your, excuse me, Nicole, to your statement about being sad when you went into the high school, I think a lot of teachers are feeling the same way. They're grieving what they thought school was gonna be, and together, we'll figure it all out. But it is a, it is a little bit of an emotional piece for teachers and staff and students at this point. But administration has been working hard. They're willing to work with MTA to just figure out what's best for students and staff. Thank you, George.
Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
And I'll leave it up here for another couple of seconds, if anybody else has a public comment. Okay, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Motion made by Dawn.
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any discussion on the motion? Calling for the vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for all your attendance here this evening.
Thank you.